Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. For today, January 19th. I'm Dan Hillmer, serving as mayor this year. I'll be running the meeting. First order of business is a roll call. Allison, our city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Harrow.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Hillmer.
I am here. And it has been a tradition for the last year that we say the Pledge of Allegiance before our meeting. So would you please join me if you're able in our Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The next item on this evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public in attendance this evening that would like to speak to items that are not listed on the agenda for the meeting? If so, you'll be given three minutes. Allison, do we have any members of the public that would like to address the council this evening?
Yes, our first comment will come from Joe Jennings.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Joe Jennings from the Commons Foundation. I just wanted to give you some very good news, a quick update. As you know, we're the designated partner for the city for raising funds for the new library at the Commons. And we have two pieces of very good news. One, we have now matching grants lined up for any gift $1,000 or more. So the Larkspur Library Foundation and others came together to put together a matching program for people donating $1,000 to $49,000. And then Lori Lerner and Terry Burke Meyer have put in a match for $50,000 and above. So what we're trying to do is maximize the amount of money the city has to work with as it's planning its grant application in February and going forward. So we first, we wanted to thank the Larkspur Library Foundation for its help. It's put up $1,000, $100,000, which is wonderful. It's very generous. Lori and Terry Burke Meyer, who've put up a huge gift and competition competitive match. And all the other people who are coming together. I'm very excited because I literally just got a $50,000 gift as I was getting ready to come into this meeting. So we're making progress. And we are very proud of the challenge support we're getting. And we just wanted to let the public know that now is the time, if you're going to give money to the library project, do it now and do it so that we can have it matched and then have it potentially matched by the state again. It was the state matching grant. And I also have to give a shout out to council member Catherine Way, who jumped on this very early and she and her husband were so kind to give us a really substantial gift against the Lori Lerner and Terry Burke Meyer challenge. So she kind of kickstarted this whole thing. So thank you. So that's the news from here. We're making progress and we're very excited and we'll keep you posted, but we're hoping that we can count on us for a substantial amount of money for the application to the state in February. Thanks. See you all later.
Thank you very much, Joe, and thanks to the Commons Foundation and the members of the community. The next item on this evening's agenda are presentations and proclamations, which we had none. So we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I actually think a member of the public was trying to speak earlier. Yeah.
My mistake.
I apologize. I think we have two additional public comment hands raised.
Well, we will hear them now, please.
Okay, our next public comment will come from Rick Adler.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a few suggestions on a proposed new city hall and library and community center combination on the Rose Lane site. I would top it with solar panels. I'll combine these to save big dollars on construction, maintenance and management of all three purposes. First floor for the community center, the second floor for the library, the third floor for the city government offices, and the roof for solar panels and rainwater collection. Because all evidence suggests that the airborne pandemic will become endemic forever. Design it with lots of easy opening, natural ventilation, but it can be closed up tight with an air purification system for wildfire and smokes season. And it's a refuge for the elderly and others with breathing problems. The community center can operate as a emergency center in these situations. And also so the people of Larkspur can meet in person in good weather and with distancing protection from airborne viruses. There should be an outdoor stage and amphitheater next to the indoor auditorium on the first floor of the community center. So that and that would be covered, of course, with solar panels like in the Redwood High School parking lot for rain and shade protection. I have a lot more ideas that I hope to be able provide for you, but I know your time is limited, so I'll just leave it at that. I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other public comments this evening?
Our next comment will come from caller ending in 1402.
No, my hand was raised for the consent calendar, please.
Okay, I'll put you on hold for one moment. I'm looking for any additional raised hands or emailed public comments. And there's no further public comment.
Thank you, Allison. Now we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is approval of the consent calendar. Are there members of the council that would like to remove or ask questions about items on the consent calendar this evening? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on items of the consent calendar? I know we have one. Allison, would you please?
Yes, James Holmes, Mr. Mayor, I would request removal of consent item 4.4, the composting ordinance, please.
All right.
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or email comments. And there's no further comments.
All right. I guess before we address item 4.4, I would look for a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of 4.1 through 4.6 with the exception of 4.4.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by council member Way. And we have a second and a third.
You pick.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrow.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes. And now we will address item 4.4, which is adopting ordinance 1056, amending chapter 6.08, refuse collection and recycling of the Larkspur Municipal Code to update the city's solid waste regulations in accordance with SB 1383. May we have a brief staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is a ordinance that the council approved at first reading at your last council meeting, and this is the second reading to actually adopt the ordinance. This is an ordinance that brings us into compliance with new state law regarding essentially the promotion of solid waste regulations in order to remove organic material from the landfill stream and place it into the composting stream. Without knowing the speaker's comments, I think I'll just turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, as the city manager indicated, this is an item that we've seen previously. Are there any questions before I ask for public comment? All right, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comment on this item? You have three minutes.
Our first comment will come from James Holmes.
James Holmes, Larkspur, thank you for taking this off. My concern continues to be the lack of an opportunity for residential customers to obtain a waiver from various provisions ordinance. Currently, only commercial customers can seek any waivers. I believe that's in violation of equal protection process and it causes a personal problem for me, as I'll explain later. When I raised this, the lack of a residential waiver at the last meeting, staff justified it by saying that the rate was a blended rate that automatically covered the composting requirement. However, the problem and the need for a waiver arises because the ordinance does not just require composting, but also requires the use of cans provided by the garbage company. Yet there are circumstances where that requirement should not be imposed. As in my own case, where my landfill amount is so de minimis that it fits in just a tiny plastic newspaper bag and the use of the can is unnecessary and excessive and unwieldy. The de minimis exception is specifically recognized for commercial in the ordinance, but residents like myself should also be able to obtain it. In my case, not from the composting requirement, but from the can use requirement. There are also other possible good reasons for a waiver that happen to apply in my case, such as that the residential terrain or the resident's own medical condition make use of the can awkward or difficult or even hazardous. In fact, a common sense waiver from the can use has long been allowed by the city going way back to when my mother requested such a waiver because of medical and terrain issues at her home. And the then city manager Harland Berry said, no, you didn't have to use it, Fran, if it's a problem. Subsequently, on my behalf, three successive city managers have affirmed this informal waiver. Messrs. Harland Berry and Doug Clark and Jean Boneander. However, this ordinance would cancel out that longstanding common sense practice. I'm not really concerned frankly with the city making an issue of the can use, but the garbage company might and has, hence the intervention of the prior city managers. So I and similarly situated residents also need a clear legal basis to obtain a waiver in situations where the use of the can would be awkward medically, terrain wise or otherwise, or de minimis. I think due process and equal protection require that this right be available alike to residents and commercial, and I certainly need it for my own purposes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I'll bring it back to the city manager for any response or city council members for any further discussion or questions.
I think Mr. Holmes is mixing up waiver issues. It sounds to me like Mr. Holmes just simply doesn't want to have a composting can on his property. That's not what this ordinance or that waiver is about. The waiver is about whether or not businesses need to have a composting can if they don't generate compost waste. Everyone's still going to pay for it. I'll have to look into what state law currently mandates and whether or not Mr. Holmes can simply say he doesn't want to have the can on his property. He certainly can put the can somewhere out of the way and never use it, and nobody's going to penalize him for that. But I would recommend you still pass this ordinance. You can ask the city attorney. I don't think Mr. Holmes' assertions about due process have standing or basis, but Mr. Woodruff might be better equipped to comment on that.
Well, what I would add is that CalRecycle, which is the state agency that is responsible for implementing SB 1383, has provided some informal guidance right now as well as a model ordinance that the one before you is based upon. And at the moment, CalRecycle has taken the position that the waivers that are available to commercial users are not available to residential users. The ones that are available are the ones that are included in this draft ordinance. Many others have raised the similar concern about providing a process for residential customers to have the ability to alter, diminish, opt out of this service. At the moment, CalRecycle has not issued regulations that would allow that, but they have said that they are going to do further rulemaking around the statute, so it might be something that could be revisited in the future. But right now, the ordinance is compliant with what CalRecycle has said cities must do to be in compliance with SB 1383.
And just to confirm, as I understand it, the waiver is to not have the can and not have to go through the process of separating organics from your landfill stream. You'll still be paying for the service regardless, is my understanding. Isn't that correct, Scott?
That is correct. And additionally, this SB 1383 does mandate separating household organics from other waste streams. And so even if the the amount produced is small on a weekly basis, ultimately, it's not supposed to be put into the same can with garbage and recycling. It's supposed to be put in its own can and eventually provided to the hall or to be taken to an appropriate processing facility.
All right. Are there council questions or comments at this point?
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
All right. Councilmember Harrow has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Allison, can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrow.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes. Ordinance 1056 has been adopted. The next item on this evening's agenda is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take a crack at sharing my screen. I have mixed results when I do that, but I think this will work. So, oh, you're seeing my email, though. So nope, it's not. I've just had the worst time with share screen lately. I'll stop it. So I was hoping to put up a picture because today a bright shiny red, brand new fire truck parked itself in front of City Hall and Fire Station 15. It's the newest addition of the Central Marin Fire Fleet, and I wanted to acknowledge it and thank our community for their ongoing support through various special taxes as well as just general support for our fire protection units because we desperately needed a modern piece of equipment. So since I couldn't get my share screen to work properly, I encourage you to, if you're in the area, walk by Station 15. I guarantee the folks in the firehouse love to show off their new shiny fire truck. Yeah. So then the other thing I wanted to make sure everybody was aware is that on Monday, the 24th, we begin our ADA, our Magnolia ADA project, which we've talked about many times. So we'll be doing some pretty significant road and sidewalk work in the downtown. We'll be sending out reminder notices to our businesses tomorrow. They've all been notified several times about this in the past. And just encourage folks to be careful as you enter the downtown. It's going to be a little disruptive for a few months as we get through this project. But we're looking forward to having new pavement and more accessible sidewalks when we're done with the project. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dan. Are there questions of the city manager? Councilmember Way?
I had one question. First of all, it sounds like you have a puppy squeaky toy in the background, so.
I will remove the squeaky toy after.
No, no, it's the challenge. It's the challenges of working from home. My first question, my second question is, with all of the COVID-related supply chain disruptions that have happened as far as cargo and construction equipment, are we looking at any issues with that when we begin this big renovation? Like pipes and cement and asphalt and all those things that we're going to need?
I haven't heard that, so I'm going to say the answer is no, and we're excited to get going. We've been relatively spared with the bridge. We had some concrete delivery problems for a while, but generally, our projects have been moving without supply chain challenges.
I know, because I know we did have an issue once early last year with the bridge projects. I just want to make sure that we're not tearing up a main roadway if we're going to have to wait six months for delivery of items that are important.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council for the city manager on his report? Councilmember Kevin Harrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks for that report. Dan, I just want to say, well, two things. One is, my air bridge is looking great. I've been over that a couple of times over the last couple of days, and it is now shaping up in the way that it is supposed to look. And it's obvious, and I think that will be a jewel in the crown of Marin County once it's completed, which I hope is still on time. I think it is, but it's going to be a real asset to the community at large. The second was just a question. Speaking of the fire trucks, I was on 101 about mid-afternoon today, and there was apparently a very serious accident on the northbound route on 101. And there were numerous fire trucks, at least three or four, and I'm wondering whether we had any involvement in that.
I'm aware of the accident because I had to drive through that, but I am not privy to which units responded. That section of 101 is sometimes us, it sometimes Kent Field Fire, it's sometimes the end of fire. It really depends on who's available.
Okay, that's fine. It looked like a a serious incident, and I'm hoping that whatever was required of us was made available. That's all. That's it.
Gabe Paulson, you had a question or a comment for the city manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Dan, just two things. One was on the Monday ADA construction. I've seen all the, you know, still in place, and it seems like the schedule switched a little. So between Ward Street and King, do all of them come down on Monday, or what's the timing of the disassembly?
My understanding is one of the parklets is gone already, and the others are supposed to be gone by Monday. And if we come to Monday and there's still one up, we'll address that at that time.
Okay, great. A second question was on the fire engine. You had mentioned, you know, there are other assessments. I'm assuming, you know, we pay Central Marin Fire out of the general fund and, you know, for capital purchases like a truck, you know, what's the funding stream for that?
Sorry, that squeaky toy. So well, the funding stream in Central Marin is its general fund. The Central Marin Fire has its own general fund. We're currently working with Corredama Dera to be able to identify when our share of particular costs can be supported by measure B, but we aren't there yet, so it's possible we'll do some reconciliation budget-wise later on. But as of now, any equipment that Central Marin Fire purchases, we owe 50% on that new equipment. With fire trucks, we typically don't buy them outright. We typically arrange a lease to own. That's an industry practice. And so I haven't actually seen the final tally for this engine, but a typical lease to own is around $100,000 a year for the six or seven years that it would take to pay off an engine.
Thank you very much.
Are there other questions from the council for the city manager? All right, seeing none, we'll move to council members' oral reports and comments. Were there council members that have reports or want to make comments this evening? Catherine Way.
I just wanted to report to all of you that age-friendly Larkspur is up and running. Our AARP application was accepted, and we have a proclamation. We have a logo. And we have a committee that's meeting tomorrow that will be the steering committee that I'm in charge of, which will guide the process. We have two years to write our strategic plan. So we're getting started, and I'm really pleased to see we have some longstanding Larkspur residents who are going to help with this. And also some longstanding Corredama Dera residents that are going to assist with the age-friendly Larkspur rollout. So I'll keep you informed, but I look forward to engaging in public policy with many of our seniors who would like to bring forward the needs that they have within our community that are appropriate for their age and physical and community interest. So I'll keep you updated.
Thank you very much. Are there other council member reports this evening? Scott Candell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, on the project Home Key front, there were two meetings, one last night, one a week prior, where there was a presentation, question and answer session. I obviously, I have a personal opinion on this whole project. And it appears that Larkspur is rather split on this. There's a petition of approximately 1,500 people that have concerns about the project. And even though this is not our decision, and it really is a county issue, I would put forward to the county at some time in the future, I'm sorry, put forward to the council at some point in the future to ask if we as a council would like to discuss this and potentially take a position on this, hear comments from the community and see if there is some type of unified voice that we can put forward. If not, people don't have the appetite for that. I completely understand. Just wanted to put forward that there is some different opinions in our community, and I think they could use a little mediation, peacemaking procedure in this. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
What was the meeting like last night, if I may ask?
So the meeting was, I would say, there was probably an hour presentation. I would say 80% of the presentation was seen in prior presentations. After that, there was a question and answer session where people posed their questions or comments, I would say, and I believe Catherine was on the call. I'd probably say 75% of the comments were negative or stating concerns. 25 were in support, and those questions were answered at the end. Whether they were answered to the satisfaction of the people asking those questions, I don't know. There wasn't an opportunity to go back and forth like that. But that was approximately how the two hours went.
I would concur with that. I think the presentation was was a duplicate presentation than before, hoping to engage with more community members. I did hear a lot of frustration that some of the answers were not as straightforward as some of the as straightforward as some of the questions from the audience would like them to be. So I I hope they continue to engage on this. They are putting together an FAQ on the website. But I think people brought up some specific things that still need to be answered in the process. And particularly on who will be the residents and how are they vetted? That's what I heard mostly, and how is is there an opportunity for for oversight that's more explicit of the residents? So we're still learning.
So the the information requested would be information from the county?
Yes.
Kevin, did you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to provide a little different perspective because I was on the call as well. I thought actually the presentation was fairly well-balanced. I understand it was in part re-presentation of what has been distributed in prior meetings. It's kind of understandable because there's only so much time that people have to put these things together. But I think there is an opportunity for a robust conversation about this. And although there was maybe a somewhat of a slant in terms of the public participation on this issue last night, there was also a robust contribution by those who are in support of this project. And as folks know, I've already gone on record in support of the project, and I hope it goes forward. Thank you.
Are there other council member reports this evening? Vice Mayor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First, I really wanted to thank Councilmember Way for what she's doing with the agent council. I, at the end of last year, got to meet with a few people. Larry Meredith and Marty Lou Schwartz and Sue Summer, and, you know, I really felt both the, you know, the clarity and the, and the, you know, the importance of the work they were doing. And I'm just so happy to see Councilmember Way working on it and want to just say, I want to support whatever measures you're taking. There's a lot, a lot of work to be done. I think the vision, the ARP, you know, work, I tried to do a little research into that. That all sounds great. So thank you for that. My second comment is, is, you know, about the the Home Key project. And thank you, you know, Scott for for that and Kevin too for your comments. I'm wondering if this is an appropriate request. I feel like that, you know, I've listened to many community members and reached out to them and emailed them as well. And, you know, trying to adhere to the Brown Act, I, you know, didn't want to consult with anybody here, only in public. But I'm wondering if the council could, you know, formulate more of what what Scott was referring to as what the 1,500 petitioners are asking for, because I don't think they're against the project. I don't think they're against supporting the homeless. But I do think that there are five or six key questions I came up with, which I haven't seen fully addressed. And I think it would go a long way towards community acceptance of the project, which I think will benefit everybody. If, if, you know, there's, you know, real transparency around, you know, oversight of the residents and oversight of the guests of the residents and policies off-site, policies on-site, you know, possible, you know, evictions for problem. I think some of this.
I do want to caution about drifting too far into substantive discussion during council member reports.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's, so it's not appropriate, but I just, I would invite further discussions. I'll just leave it at that.
I'm sure you've shared this this with these observations with the county as well. All right, other council member reports this evening. Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. We have one this evening. So I'll open the public hearing. This is consideration and possible adoption of an interim urgency ordinance extending ordinance 1055, amending and adding sections to Title 18 of the City of Larkspur Municipal Code to adopt regulations of new housing development to comply with Senate Bill 9. This is from 2021. May we please have a staff report?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Do I need to share my screen?
If you have a, do you have a presentation?
Yeah.
Yes. There you go.
Welcome, Daniel.
I have to, I have to drag it in front of me. Working with too many screens nowadays.
Think you have the same gremlin I do. I'm not.
Yeah. I got it to work. I just hope it, I hope it advances.
Are others, is any, I'm not seeing your slide. Are you seeing it?
You're not seeing it now?
It was there, and then you, and then you moved it.
Right, we were seeing the slide. Now we're seeing your other screen with a sunset.
Yeah. Yeah, put it back where it was.
There you go.
On the screen that I, okay, now I see it in the middle. All right, I have to click it over here and look over here. All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Happy New Year. Dan Horderd, interim planning manager. The presentation before you tonight is a brief rehash of ordinance 1055, which you adopted last council meeting. And tonight's staff is requesting that you extend the urgency ordinance by 10 months and 15 days. The act was signed by, just a little bit of background, that you already, you already got this last meeting, but I'm going to run through it pretty quickly. So the act was signed by Governor Newsom, September 16th, the last year, and became effective January 1st of this year. The interim ordinance was adopted by city council December 15th, 2021. And what it does is it sorry, it amends Title 18 of Larkspur Municipal Code by adding a new chapter to the zoning portion. The act requires the city review SB 9 development projects and urban lot splits ministerially without hearing or public input. SB 9 projects are only permitted on residentially zoned districts in the city of Larkspur. That's the R1 first residential. And an urban lot split must be approximately equal in size. There's a 40-60 variable that it can only be no more than, and the minimum square feet is 1,200. And we can't impose any additional regulations such as right-of-way designation, outside improvements, and so forth. One thing to take note of is that the building official may make a written finding based on a preponderance of evidence that the project would have an adverse impact on public health and safety and may deny the project. That is one of the only ways that the project can be denied unless it's in one of the restricted areas such as high-fire severity zones. Review in this case of any SB 9 projects must be completed under objective standards. And what that means is that the objective standards are those that are based on factual measurements in the absence of biased judgment or subjective analysis. What we proposed to you under ordinance 1055 Exhibit A had those objective standards. So staff is recommending that council adopt ordinance 1057, extending ordinance 1055 so that we may engage in public, engage the public in more robust outreach, further refine the objective standards, which we really need to do, further consideration of affordability requirement that's in there, and the alternatives to allowing larger units. Right now, we only allow maximum 800 square feet of each unit on the site. And with that, I'll turn it back over to council for any questions or comments.
Very much. Are there questions of staff from the council?
Kevin. Thanks for that presentation. I think we we are where we are. I just would like a little bit more clarification about what's anticipated in terms of process in developing the standards that would be applied in the context of this legislation.
So basically, you're asking me what the next steps are in order?
Kind, kind, kind of, and what, and also what level of discretion do we have in making decisions that are appropriate for our community?
Very little. Councilman Harof, we have, the approval must be through objective standards. We can't, anything that's subjective that doesn't have a definitive measurement or outcome to it or metric can't be used to weigh against the approval of the project.
Right, but I guess my question is, how much discretion do we have in establishing, establishing those standards?
Oh, okay, so I misunderstood. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
I'm so caught up in this SB 9.
No, it's, it's, it's rough, rough work.
Yeah, so, so what I think, you know, needs to be done, I think we need to put this to some public outreach and get some input from, from, from the community on what they see. And number one, show them what they can and can't do. And number two, get their input on on how we should move forward and in designing those objective standards. We already have objective standards. We just need to refine them.
Right, so I guess my question is mostly the process that we anticipate going forward in terms of refining those standards that reflect the needs and interests of our community during the period of time that we have to do that.
I don't think we've yet to find it. I don't think we've yet to find that council member. I think we haven't met that process.
And that that's kind of the answer that I anticipated, and I think we have work to do.
We agree with you. I just, getting this ordinance in front of you was step one.
I, I, I understand that, and I'm totally in support, in support of that, but I want to make sure that we have our eyes on the ultimate objective of setting objective standards that are appropriate for our community. Otherwise, I'm happy to support the, the, you know, the motion tonight.
Are there other questions on this item from the council for staff? All right, Vice Mayor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, I just had one minor question from your last presentation. Number, this is regarding fire safety. So the adoption of this ordinance would then continue the very high severity fire maps from the Department of Forestry, correct?
You mean, yeah, the wooies that were attached? Yeah.
Which, which seemed to be more restrictive than what SB 9 might dictate later. So at least for 10 months and 15 days, we're, we're, you know, in my opinion, adopting a more conservative approach to what fire safety is.
I would agree with that. We're still working through the the whole high-fire severity zone issue because the the statute, in a sense, would you say sky contradicts itself?
I would say that that the way that SB 9 was written with cross-references to other provisions of state law creates a little bit of a confusing set of statements that I don't think are necessarily the intent of the authors. And so what we understand is that the fire chiefs are talking amongst themselves about how to interpret this, and they're talking to the legislature about some cleanup language. And so one of the things that this current set of regulations will do is allow us to apply a set of standards while that work continues, hopefully getting some greater clarity during the period that the interim ordinance is in place.
Great, thank you. And so my understanding is, from the last presentation in December, we we had quite a few shaded areas where lots splits and R1 would not be allowed. And as of today, that continues.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Are there questions of staff from council members? Seeing none, Allison, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience numbers or any emailed public comments. And there is no, I apologize, our first comment will come from Rick Adler.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I was looking at the fire zone map on, in the last page, 34 of the presentation. And are those areas? It would seem to me, but are they the lots could not be split in those areas because of the fire danger, the crowding, the parking, and the steep hill sides? Is that correct?
That, that would be the intent of the, of that portion of the ordinance.
And looking at the map of the lots in Larkspur, a lot of neighborhoods, the lots are just too small to be able to split them and provide the fire truck access and and all the other things that are listed as necessary. So I was wondering, is, is there estimation of which neighborhoods this, well, these lot splits could be done in? And how many lots? Roughly, how many lots are we talking about where this is possible?
So I I don't know that number off the top of my head, but that's, that's pretty much the goal of getting this extension so that we can work on issues such as this.
Because it would seem to me that there's only some neighborhoods have the space and to meet all these requirements necessary to do this. And I was wondering if you can do a survey if that's possible to get a rough idea of how many which neighborhoods and how many lots we're talking about here.
Mr. Mayor, I think we certainly do what the speaker is requesting, that it's an awful lot of public resources, and I'm not sure what we would do with the information.
Well, we'll, we'll accept the the comment. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments or ask questions on this agenda item?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands or email comments. And there's no further public comment.
I'll bring it back to the city council for further discussion or a motion.
I will move a public hearing 7.1.
This is Kevin. I'm happy to second that, with, with the understanding that we have a lot of work to do in order to figure out how to implement this.
Yes. We have a motion for consideration of extending ordinance 1055. And we have a second. Councilmember Harof, Allison, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Harof?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer?
Yes. That passes. Moving on, this closes the public hearing. And the next item on the season's agenda are business items. The first one being 8.1, fiscal years 2020 and 2021 audit of the city's basic financial statements. May we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'm very pleased to introduce your administrative services director is the brains of our outfits, so she can introduce you to our auditor and the item. Kathy, I'm going to quickly turn it to you.
There I am. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to say that we have completed yet one more audit for the city of Larkspur. And with the help of Ahmed Bedwani and his Bedwani Associates. Bedwani Associates, um, who had audited our city's transactions. Ahmed is here tonight to present the findings of the audit and give you a little presentation. So, um, I'll turn it over to Ahmed.
Good evening and thank you, Kathy, for the introduction. Um, I have a small presentation. Uh, so I'm going to share my screen, but I wanted to thank you for inviting me to your meeting. So you should be seeing my screen now. Yeah, I'm gonna start the slideshow here. All right. So they are presents to the council, the results of the fiscal year twenty twenty one audits. Uh, the agenda for today is I will let you know who the engagement team was. Uh, what were our deliverables in the scope of our audits? Uh, areas of the primary emphasis. The type of audit opinion we issued and summarized to you some of the numbers in the financial statements. Uh, provide you some of the required communications as your independent auditor. A brief overview of the new accounting standards coming your way. And see if you have any questions or any additional discussion items. Of course, feel free to interrupt me anytime you do have questions. So there's a slight delay here. There we go. Uh, in terms of our engagement team, this was the composition of our engagement team. Uh, I am the engagement partner. Um, we had, uh, Wenwei Zhao as our senior. And we had three professional staff assigned to the audit. Uh, we also, uh, always have a quality control reviewer. This individual is usually in the background and the role is to review our work. And review the financial statements and make sure that we adhere to independent standards and professional standards. Uh, for deliverables and the scope of our audits, uh, we were mainly engaged to provide an opinion on the city of Larkspur basic financial statements. Uh, with, uh, because the city of Larkspur is subject to government auditing standard. We are also required to issue a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. Uh, the city is a recipient of federal funds, uh, uh, the bridge project, for example, is, uh. Uh, one, one example of, uh, uh, some of the, most of the federal funds are spent. And that's normally required a compliance audit, what we refer to as a single audit. So we have performed that for the city as well. Uh, we perform an agreed upon procedures and the appropriation limit. Uh, just reviewing the city's calculation, making sure that the city is using the, the proper. Uh, uh, per capita income and so on. And then finally, the communication was the governing body, which is what I'm doing today. And we also issue a letter summarizing this communication and is addressed to the city council. Uh, in terms of areas of primary audit emphasis, uh, we had a few areas that are pretty standard in most of our audits. Uh, the risk of management override of controls, uh, this is a risk that just by default exists in any audit. Management are normally the one who designed the control. They are the one who monitor them and they, this, they may decide to override them. Uh, so we design our audit procedures to, uh, mitigate that risk or at least reduce it to an acceptable level. Uh, we make sure that we assign more experienced staff to more complex areas of the audit. Uh, that we incorporate an element of unpredictability in our audit process from year to year. Uh, that we look at the selection of the accounting, uh, principles that the city is using and make sure that they're being consistently applied. We test journal entries prepared by management, would review any estimates prepared by management to make sure that they're free of bias. We evaluate business rationale for any unusual transactions. And we also evaluate the appropriateness of fraud related inquiries performed. Uh, revenues and receivable, uh, another area that the auditing standards require the auditors to assume that it is an area of a higher risk. Unless we can justify otherwise. So we normally don't try to justify otherwise and, uh. Quite frankly, auditing, uh, government, the revenues, uh, are not very complicated because we rely heavily on, uh, confirmations from third parties. So we communicate with the county, with the state, with, uh, other franchises and, and we, uh, confirm. Amount submitted to the city. We reconcile that to the city's accounting records and make sure that they do reconcile. Pension and OPEB are a- areas that involve high dollars, uh, also complex accounting. It does involve obtaining actuarial studies, uh, extracting information from those actuaries study to record activities of the pension plan and the OPEB plan. Uh, we review all journal entries prepared by management to record those transactions. Uh, we also, uh, obtain, uh, audit reports from, from CalPERS. Uh, we verify the amount invested in the plan. Uh, and we also do testing of census data provided by the city to the pension plan. Uh, COVID nineteen and shelter in place, uh, is a risk in any audit, uh, operations have changed. Uh, uh, remote work approval processes have changed. Uh, so it's just something that we have to consider as we plan around. As for our audit opinion, uh, we have issued an unmodified opinion. Uh, that is, uh, in simple terms, a clean opinion. And the audit opinion state the auditing standards that we followed, which are the generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. An audit opinion, uh, an unmodified opinion means in summary that we believe that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. That all accounting policies have been consistently applied, that all estimates are reasonable and that all disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. I wanted to give you a very summarized, uh. Uh, view of some of the financial numbers. And, uh, on slide number ten, here is a summary of the city's assets over the last three years. Um, we, we work with a lot of cities and that we see very consistent, the two largest assets in any city we audit are usually the cash investments and the capital assets. Uh, that is the same situation with Larkspur. You can obviously see, uh, capital assets have been increasing over the years. And that's the, the direct, uh, result of the construction of the bridge. Um, so, uh, but other than that, uh, things have been fairly consistent. On the next slide, uh, summary of the city's liabilities over the last three years. And, uh, I think the only two things that are worth mentioning here is that the long-term liabilities, which is a, a column in the middle. Uh, thi- this represent all your bonds and loans and all the long-term liabilities outstanding, obviously increased in twenty twenty. As a result of issuing the, the pension bonds. And then, uh, CalPERS is always one year behind, uh, so you can see that the net pension liability has gone in twenty twenty one from seventeen million to eight thousand. So obviously that looks very good. Uh, but you probably heard that also the discount rate has been reduced by CalPERS. So that would probably mean an increase in the unfunded liability. Uh, but w- we have a few slides on the pension. We can discuss that more.
Um, Mr. Dottie, could, what, could you explain to me what deferred inflow of resources is and why it went from two million to twelve?
Uh, sure, sure. So deferred inflow, uh, of resources, um, uh. Uh, are basically, they're, they're usually relating to the pension and OPEB plans and, uh, and the pension plan may have changes that occur. From one year to another and accounting standards, uh, uh, allow you to not expense it all in the same year. So for example, if there were changes in assumptions. Or there were changes between actual results and expected results. Instead of having to expense the full amount of the change in the current year, a pension expense. Uh, accounting standards allow you to spread it over a period of time. Um, and the deferred amounts is, is the holding place that reflects the unamortized amount or the unrecognized amount. Uh, I, I would say that, uh. I mean, I, I would have to look, uh, as to what was the exact change that caused that, but deferred inflows in general. Are designed to capture those changes in the pension liability and the OPEB liability and recognize them over time.
Thank you. I think it, I mean, I mean, it's probably the, since we. Took out bonds to, we took out debt to pay our pension liabilities first. Which is why the corresponding number under net pension liability drops so dramatically.
Uh, also that. Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, 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 definitely the corresponding net pension liability. That is exactly the reason why. It's, it's directly because of the extra contributions resulted the pension, of the pension bonds. Uh, but also CalPERS have had, uh, significant investment earnings. And those investment earnings are normally spread over five years. Uh, so that would create a deferred inflow. If the, the, I, I believe that their earnings were somewhere in the twenty some percent. Um. But that was spread over five years. So you would not see the result of that as a reduction of pension expense in the current year. All right. And, uh. Uh, moving on to the next slide here is the city's net position. And, uh, net position is city's assets minus city's liabilities. And that is divided into three categories. The first one is net investment in capital assets. And those are the amounts that I always tell my clients will never become. Uh, in a spendable form. This is how much the city invested in, uh, streets and roads and buildings. And those amounts can only be, become spendable if the city decide to sell those assets. Uh, restricted amounts are amounts that have, uh, third party legal restriction on them. So it can be unspent grant proceeds, um, the gas tax, uh, variety of other funding sources that are restricted for a specified purpose. The unrestricted amounts are the amounts that are under the council control and currently this amount is a deficit fourteen million.
Uh, I'm, I'm. Just asking a question, can, can you explain that unrestricted amount as a, a negative number? Um, I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding what that signifies.
Well, so this is really looking at the, the city's, uh, assets minus liabilities, uh, including all long-term liabilities. So it will include pension and OPEB. And if I look at, uh, the OPEB liabilities, almost fourteen million. Uh, so that deficit fourteen million is after subtracting all of those liabilities. Pension obligation, bonds, the, the net OPEB liability and all of that. Uh, so yeah, uh, looking at the city's assets minus city's liabilities. You, uh, you have an, uh, an unrestricted deficit. Meaning that all other resources are either restricted or already invested in capital assets. Uh, but again, this is, uh, only, this is really looking at the long term. Uh, but looking at the short term, the general fund would be a good representation of the city's cash position. Liquidity and so on. Uh, but of course I don't want to be, uh, discounting the deficit. Uh, all it means is that you, you, it's just, these are long-term liabilities. The city have many years to, to make up for that.
Uh, so, so just a follow-up question on the long-term assets. I'm assuming cash reserves is not part of that. What, what are some of the? Long-term assets to offset OPEB and the pension liabilities?
Uh, no, I mean, these are all the city's assets and there are really the only long-term assets are the capital assets, which are not going to be offsetting those liabilities. Uh, those liabilities will be offsetted by, by future revenues exceeding future expenditures. And, uh, and, and the city paying down those levels.
Okay. So there's nothing on the books. So basically a negative, um, if you go to that graph with the, the negative bars. Um, there's really no asset to offset it. Those are just, um, you know, eighteen million or fourteen million. In, in liability long-term and it's just being slowly bought down by the pension obligation bond and, and general payoff.
That, that is correct. Uh, those amounts are net. So taking the assets minus the liabilities. And, um. Uh, even though your total equity is probably positive, but that's the reason why we like to divide it. To bring to your attention that even though your total equity is positive, part of it is non-spendable, part of it is restricted. And the unrestricted portion is actually in a deficit.
Okay.
And if I, if I could just briefly, I want to remind the council. One of the things we committed to when we refinanced our pension debt. Was that we would continue to set aside the same amount we had been paying in CalPERS. But we'd be using the savings from the pension refinancing. To start addressing OPEB. So you'll start to see this number come down because we're going to start to be paying. Against the OPEB liability by placing money into a trust. So, um, I think you'll start to see. Us making considerable progress over the next several years on that number.
And Dan, that was the refinancing we did in March twenty twenty. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that reminder.
All right. Uh, the next slide is looking at revenues compared to expenses. Um, uh, this is what's in your financial statements, but I do, uh, I'm going to have a, another slide just for the general fund. I do want to bring to your attention that th- those numbers represent all city funds. Using the full accrual basis of accounting. So you see the numbers are very, uh, are very positive. But what I would like to bring to your attention that, for example, the construction of the bridge. The, the, the expenses are capitalized as an asset, so they are not reflected here. However, the revenue from the federal grants are reflected here. So those numbers usually look, uh, very positive, but just keeping that in mind that it. It shows the revenue for a significant transaction, but not the expense. But it's still a positive number and it's still a good number. And, uh, another ratio that we normally, uh, provide to our clients is that is a net cost of service to tax revenues. And the net cost of service is a, is a, is the cost of running all city departments. Minus any revenues that those departments bring in on their own, either grants or fee for service or fines. And the idea is to see how dependent those departments are on tax revenues and whether tax revenues are sufficient to cover. That cost of service. As you can see. Uh, over the last three years, the co- the tax revenues were significantly higher than the cost of service. But I am going to remind you again that the cost of service has already been reduced by the federal grants relating to the construction of the bridge. So that's, so once that is complete, you, your cost of service is going to look higher. So. Uh, this is probably, uh, the, the, one of the most, uh, important slide. Because it's only focused on the general fund. And the general fund is where most of the unrestricted resources of the city resides. And as you can see here, uh, the city as of twenty twenty one had about eighteen point four million in unrestricted fund balance. And the city's annual expenditures in the general fund were only sixteen million. So the city have fund balance that equal about fourteen months course of expenditures. And that is a very positive, uh, financial position. Um, and that is only looking at short term. So the general fund obviously does not have pension liabilities, does not have OPEB liabilities or pension obligation bond. It really only looks at the current contributions that the city does.
So, so I, and I'm sorry, ca- can you just explain in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty? The unrestricted fund balance is less than the total expenditures. Uh, does that mean we spent more than we had in those years?
Uh, no, no, no. This is, uh, just basically the leftover. So fund balance is what's left at the end of the year. And, uh, uh, we look at it as almost like the savings.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So normally, uh, anything below two months would be concerning for us. That means that the city has no reserves for any emergencies or anything like that. Fourteen months is definitely, uh, a very positive number. All right. Uh, the next few slides are going to focus on pension and OPEB. Again, my apology for the slight delay here. Um, so this slide summarized the city's contributions to CalPERS over the last three years. So obviously twenty twenty is the year where the city made the contribution using the pension obligation bond. And then twenty twenty one, you can see that the contributions are now very minimal. Um, pension liability is an estimated number. And one of the most, uh, significant assumption in developing that estimate is a discount rate. So currently the city's pension liability at eight thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars is based on a seven point one five percent discount rate. Uh, accounting standards require us to disclose to you what the liability would be if the discount rate is either increased or decreased by one percent. Um, I wanted to mention that, uh, uh, probably the eight point one five percent is an unlikely scenario. Uh, I believe that actually, uh, CalPERS have already reduced their discount rate to six point eight. Uh, so definitely this is the, the direction that CalPERS is going is lower discount rate. Uh, it, who knows what impact is going to be because CalPERS, uh, uh. Strategy is that they're reducing the discount rate when they have very good years. So in, in the hope of offsetting the impact. And I believe that they. So, in, in the hope of offsetting the impact. And I believe that they had some twenty some percent returns. And this is why they decided to lower the discount rate in the hope that it, it would be offset by those high returns. Um. But that, that pension liability number is, is, is always changing. You may fund it to zero. And then depending on what's happening in the market and the assumptions that CalPERS is, are using, you may find that you have a liability again the following year. So. Uh, OPEB is, uh, the retiree medical benefits is another plan that the city offer. And again, this is a summary of the contributions over the last three years to the plan. And then the fun, uh, uh, the funded status of the plan at the, the discount, the current discount rate is two point six percent. And again, uh, presenting to you what the liability would be if that discount rate is either increased or decreased by one percent. Another important assumption in the OPEB, the liability is the healthcare trend rate. So wanted to also show you what your number would be if that trend rate is either increased or decreased by one percent. The next part of my presentation is the required communications as your independent auditor. So I'm just waiting on the slides. Uh, this slide summarizes our responsibility and city management's responsibility in the audit process. Uh, we are mainly responsible for providing an opinion on the city's financial statements, whether they're fairly stated in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We're also responsible for evaluating internal control over financial reporting, for evaluating compliance with laws and regulations, contracts and grants, for ensuring the city's financial statements are clear and transparent. And finally, we are responsible for communicating with the governing body. Management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements. So our service does not relieve management from its responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of those financials. Management is responsible, excuse me, is responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control over financial reporting, for making financial records available to us during the audit process, for establishing internal control to prevent and detect fraud, inform us of unknown and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, take corrective action on any audit findings. Uh, in terms of independence, uh, it is our responsibility as the audit firm to maintain our independence, and we evaluate our independence uh, in a variety of ways, uh, additional services that we offer the city that may impact our independence. One of them is compiling the financial statements on behalf of the city. So we, we have an independence reviewer that reviews the financial statements to ensure that we maintain our independence. We also circulate the questionnaires to all of our firm members, asking them to identify any relationships with city staff or city government in general, and we remove those individuals from the audit. Uh, as for the timing of the audit, we believe that the audit was performed in the timeframe communicated to the city. Um, every year, there are new accounting standards that the city have to, uh, at least entertain, whether they are applicable to the city or not. Uh, the following are the accounting standards that were due to be implemented in the current fiscal year. And the city have evaluated those accounting standards, and some of them did apply to the city. Uh, I mentioned earlier that some of the numbers in the financial statements are estimated numbers. So I just wanted to give you an idea about what some of those numbers are. Uh, useful life capital assets, investment fair value, uh, pension plans, OPEB plans, and so on. Uh, also wanted to, uh, highlight to you some of the, uh, significant disclosure or important disclosures in the financial statements. Uh, this, the, the disclosure are usually the narrative part of the financials, and they provide additional information about, for example, on cash and investment, about the city's investment policy and the different risks that the investments are exposed to and so on. Uh, we encountered no difficulties during the audits. Always been a pleasure working with management, uh, very cooperative, responsive to our requests. So definitely no issues there. Uh, we had no significant audit adjustments, so that's, uh, another uh, a good reflection on, uh, how the city does its accounting and closes its books. Uh, normally, when there are significant adjustments, it means that, that management have missed recording transactions or in incorrectly recorded transactions, and we did not find any single significance. Uh, no significant risk or exposure were identified. Uh, we normally communicate with legal counsel. We ask them to disclose to us outstanding litigations. We evaluate, uh, to, to see if there are any additional disclosure needed relating to this. We're pleased to say that we had no disagreement with management. We had one control deficiency regarding written policies and procedures that the city uh, should develop, uh, written policies and procedures, and I believe that they are in progress, uh, but written policies and procedures are important to ensure business continuity in and during times of maybe turnover of staff or emergencies or so on. Uh, we obtained certain representations from management prior to issuance of reports. Uh, there was representations, uh, management is acknowledging responsibility for the financial statements, representing to us that they disclose unknown facts, that they're not aware of any fraud and a variety of other representations. We're not aware that management has contracted any other accounting firm to consult on any audit matters. Other than our engagement letter and the representation letter, we had no other significant communications with management. There were no material uncertainties relating to events and conditions, and we have not become aware of any instance of fraud or illegal acts. On this slide here is just a summary of the new accounting standards and the year of implementation. Uh, so we normally have discussions with management and, uh, uh, assist in determining which ones would be applicable and what the city need to do to comply with them. Uh, with that, I want to, uh, thank you again for allowing us the opportunity, and I am more than happy to answer any additional questions.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, Allison, my, uh, video seems to be blocked. It says the host has blocked your video.
Let me check one moment, um, to ask you to start your video. Apologize if that happened.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you very much. That was a thorough presentation. Are there questions from council members on the presentation? Council member Hera.
Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amit. That was a, uh, very, uh, helpful and thorough, uh, presentation. Um, I just had a, actually a follow-up question for the city manager on the one item that you pointed out, um, as, um, not of concern, but if you, it was pointed out about written policies and procedures. And I was just curious to know how the city is responding to that item.
I'm gonna have to ask Kathy Orm to, to respond and identify what the missing procedure was that she's working on.
I, I believe that, that I had been saying, well, what finance needs to have some internal procedures on how we operate and it, and the checking and imbalances and making sure that there are proper procedures to doing journal entries and who's approving and who's doing them, and it needs to be written down. We're, we're functioning as is, but it's, I, it's on me to produce the written documents for the, I'll have it done by next audit.
So the issue is not what we're doing. It's that it's not written down in this explicit policy.
Right, and, and, and fair enough, and I, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to make make sure that we all understand and the public understands that that's an issue that's been identified and it's being addressed.
Policies are always good, you know, there's to have written down and for everybody, so they know, we know exactly how it should be done and that we're following proper procedures and pro- so, you know, as the three of us work very closely together, my bad, it needs to be written down.
No, no, no criticism. I just want to make sure it, it's understood. I think it is, and that, that, that's all fine. We'll just get that cleaned up. That's it.
Uh, thank you. Are there other questions from council members? From Mr. Badawi. Uh, seeing none, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Uh, we'll move on the agenda.
I think it would be appropriate to formally accept the, the financial statements, Mr. Mayor.
So, um, requires a motion?
I think that would be appropriate to, to take a motion to accept the statements.
Uh, I, I would be honored to make a motion to accept that financial statement.
All right.
I'll second that.
A motion to accept, motion to accept the independent audit in a second. May we please have a roll call vote?
Council member Candell?
Yes.
Council member Hera?
Yes.
Council member White?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer?
Yes. And again, thanks to the staff and the consulting team for all the hard work that goes into their audits every year. We often take for granted how well they, uh, perform. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is eight point two. A community services department reorganization item. May we have a staff report, please?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Hillmer and members of the city council. My name is Shannon O'Hare, and I'm the assistant to the city manager, and I will be providing a brief report tonight on this item. Uh, city manager Schwartz will likely be, uh, adding material and chiming in, so it's always a little awkward to tag team on a virtual meeting, but we'll do our best. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And then is everyone seeing the beginning of the PowerPoint here? Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay. Starting off, so to just provide some context of kind of where we've been and where we're at. Um, in twenty twenty, the city combined the library and recreation departments into a community services department, and library and recreation became divisions of that department. There were a number of significant changes as part of that, notably the elimination of the recreation director position, as well as a short-term, um, soft hiring freeze and, um, a freeze on a lot of, um, a lot of programming, particularly in the recreation division. This was both because of budgetary concerns. In twenty twenty, we did not know what the fiscal outlook would be for the city. And then also, and more importantly, the, um, very grave health considerations at the time and the real inability to provide some of the, um, recreation programming that we love because it wasn't safe and wasn't safe at the time. Um, since then, we've, um, continued with the community services model, and it's become a successful one. There were a number of meetings where the city manager and the department heads provided an update on the new department, and it wasn't necessarily, it was seen as hopefully a long-term solution for the city, but we, we weren't quite sure it was an experiment and it was uncharted territory. Um, so since then, we've moved the model from a temporary arrangement to a permanent department. Um, however, further investment is needed to accomplish medium and long-term departmental goals, restore service levels, and further integrate the library and recreation divisions. Um, so tonight, staff is asking the council to reorganize the community services department by taking the following actions. Um, establish a dot job description, classification, and salary range for a newly created assistant community services director position. Um, amend the job description for the community services director to reflect the addition of the assistant community services director position. Um, I don't want to say this is necessarily a formality, but it's a number of changes in the, um, job description to reflect that there's a new position, and then also note that uh, it's foreseen in the future that the community services director will come from one of the, um, one of the, uh, areas, either library or recreation, and then the assistant community services director will likely come from the, the other area um, in profession. And then we'll also are asking the council to amend the authorized position to formally include this newly created, uh, position, and then also in the library division, replace the circulation supervisor position with a librarian too in our list of authorized positions. Uh, so that's a very technical, uh, term. You may wonder if sometimes if you see reorganizations, if we do these things for fun, I assure you, we do not. Uh, there's a purpose for this reorganization. Um, we're working to rebuild the recreation and library divisions after two years of really significantly impacted service levels. Uh, staff in both divisions have done a great job, um, to still provide for our community. But particularly in recreation, we haven't been doing events. Uh, facility rentals have looked very different. Passive use in our, in our parks and facilities has been up, scheduled use has been down, and we've had to really alter um, the kind of classes and programming we offer. Uh, we also want to structure the department in a way that will deliver sustained service improvements, and I'll get into that a little bit later, as well as provide additional support that will enable management staff to intend to internal operational needs. Uh, a community services director, it's a really tall task, and if there's anybody who could be in two places at once, I'm confident is our current community services director, but that's simply not possible, at least at this time without technology. Um, so really, there are a lot of facilities. We have a beautiful library facility, and we will, the city manager may get into the fact that we may have a new exciting facility, and we have a lot of, um, parks and facilities on the recreation side, and there just really needs to be someone with managerial authority to be able to oversee both of those areas and everything we offer. Um, part of this is also to, uh, reorganization is also to strengthen staff development and retention, and I'll get into that a little bit more, as well as begin to prepare the department to be structured for a successful dis- service delivery at a new library facility. We had a great update from the comments during, um, public comment today. Um, and we'll likely be hearing more in the future, but as this becomes, uh, reality with the date, we want our, uh, we want our staff to be prepared and to be able to offer services at a new expanded facility. Do you have anything to add, Dan?
Uh, I would just emphasize the last point Shannon made is a big part of what we're now doing as part of our planning. We're not just thinking about today, but we're thinking about next year, and we're thinking about two or three years from now when we'll have a new facility online. And planning our hiring and our models to grow into um, that new space and the expectations that'll go with it.
Great. So one of the big portions of this reorganization is the assistant director, the community services director position. Uh, this position is anticipated to take additional management responsibility in areas of personnel, program design, execution and management of contracts, coordination with neighboring agencies and community groups, day-to-day operations, risk management, facility oversight, and purchasing. And again, this is really just to provide a certain depth at the managerial level. Um, and some, some kind of extra space in our organization to really uh, deliver on both positions, both in terms of service to the public. So as events come back, as we start to increase programming, as facility, interest in our facility starts coming back, or indoor facilities, um, that staff can be able to, you know, do kind of all of, I don't want to say boring because I enjoy it, but to the public, uh, some of the backend that, um, tasks that are associated with this, making sure all of the top contracts are in order, working with uh, finding and working with, um, consultants, uh, and contractors, um, et cetera. Uh, additionally, the assistant community services director is expected to have working knowledge of operations and programming in both divisions and serve as an acting director in the director's absence. It was not an expectation for the recreation director and the library director to know what was going on in each department, although all of our staff talks all of the time. You, you, it wasn't expected that you'd be able to step in and really have a working knowledge of what was going on in both areas, and that will be an expectation, this new position. Um, the director will continue to report to the city manager, manage the apartment budget, develop department's strategic goals, and serve as the primary liaison to the community. None of that will be changing in the structure. Um, the other primary part of this reorganization is that the city is proposing to replace the circulation supervisor position with a librarian two position assigned to access services. No one is currently in the circulation supervisor position, so it won't have an impact on anyone who'd be um, in that role. And the reason that we're looking to do this is, in the medium term, the new structure of the library division will be able to employ three dedicated professional librarians, and that's dedicated librarians. Our community services director is also a professional librarian by training. Um, but in the new structure, we'll have But in the new structure, we'll have a two more senior librarians. One will be assigned to and is assigned to you services, and then this librarian too will be able to serve as a librarian to the community, but will also be assigned to some of the things that were assigned to the circulation supervisor position for circulation services and the uh management of our part-time staff. And then we will continue to have the librarian one position assigned to adult services. Um, in it, in addition to the fact that this will be allow um some movement for our staff, our current staff, we found that in particularly since 2020, the the kinds of services that uh our community has been asking often like require a professional librarian. We've automated a certain number of um tasks that are no longer be being done by staff, as well as the fact that, you know, the community is more than ever interested in um our library services. Additionally, part of the way the library used to operate without being too technical is that if there was a staffing shortage doing to somebody being out sick, doing to somebody taking vacation or needing leave, you would be able to call in, actually all librarians and or all libraries in the region would be able to call in a substitute librarian to cover that shift, and that's been increasingly difficult with the current labor market, and that's unlikely to change. So being able to have coverage so that there are librarians, um, you know, in the building and on staff and available to the community um will be a positive development. Um, and then additionally, this model will bring the library division in line with many structures in the in the um profession and then offer improved library services to patrons. Um, so immediate actions as a result of the reorganization is that the incumbent recreation supervisor will be promoted to the assistant community services director. Our incumbent librarian one will be promoted to the librarian two and assume responsibilities previously held by the circulation supervisor. In addition to serving as a professional librarian, we will be launching a recruitment to replace the librarian two that's promoted. Um, and then on a, on a budget level, we will not be replacing the circulation supervisor and recreation supervisor positions at this time. It does not mean that there'll never be a recreation supervisor or that things might change, but it won't be replaced. And the immediate cost as a result for all these staffing changes, these promotions is estimated to be up to $60,000 increase in salaries in the community services budget. Um, staff has determined there is sufficient funds in the budget to absorb this cost. Um, and then just conclusion, the actions tonight allow the city to move forward with the staffing changes to improve services. The model and structure of the department will continue to evolve over time, uh especially if there is a new building. And then for community members who are interested or council members, if there are questions, there are upcoming presentations that are going to provide some detail on some areas I covered briefly here. So uh in a February meeting, the city manager will be and um administrative services director will be providing a much more detailed overlook of Larkspur budget and our fiscal outlook. And um there'll be a much more interesting presentation about some of the technicalities around this uh community services where um offering the community at the department overview and update. It's also been called goals and accomplishments in previous years that the department heads present as part of the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget process, and that'll be happening at an April or May council meeting likely. So with that, um, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions the council may have or community, if we have members of the public.
Are there questions from the council uh for Shannon? That was a great presentation, Shannon. Thank you very much.
No, no questions, but that was a, that was a great presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Uh, questions, council member Candell and then council member Wayne.
Uh, thanks. Just just some quick things. First of all, I uh understand we're moving forward uh to uh anticipate uh recreation increasing. Uh, I know right now we are still in the midst of COVID, uh so I'm not sure what the rush is. Um, and I guess along the same vein is I I was wondering if we have a budget meeting coming up in February, we need updates on budgets. Wouldn't it make sense to discuss this uh at that meeting as well? And I'm, you know, is there some urgency why we need to do this today as opposed to when we have a little bit more information?
Um, that's all chiming, council member Ken. Now that there's two things that made me feel this should come, I'm needing ahead of the mid-year budget discussion. One is that um something that's actually happening in the library right now. Um, we have two employees who are professional what staff librarians and we have the director. Because of various commitments and various uh matters that the two professional librarians need to take care of in their personal life, the director is essentially having to act as a, as a professional librarian out on the floor, so he's not being the director right now, and that problem keeps happening. And I feel there is a sense of urgency to recruit another librarian. Recruitments are taking a long time for us, and I'd like to get that librarian recruitment started right away. The other thing we experienced uh was recently when the director took some time off, we don't have clarified chain of command and we don't have defined span of control in the department and modifying the recreation supervisor position into the assistant director position is going to help us establish better clarity inside the department, and I felt that could come forward now. Um, I, I understand your question and your concern. If you feel uh if you feel the need to delay, I would ask you at least authorize the librarian recruitment. And I'd also tell you, I'd probably make a commitment to the incumbent recreation supervisor that any promotion we've talked to him about, I'd backdate eventually to now because he's effectively taken on in the last month, all the responsibilities consistent with what we want to ask of him in preparation of taking on this position.
Uh, thank you for explaining that, and I don't have a a a need to delay. I was just trying to understand uh the urgency when.
Yeah. Increasingly with recruitments, just want to get them started, and it is tough out there.
It's a good question. So recruitment's in great times, and we're we're faster than a lot of government. I pride ourselves in that, that we're pretty, we're pretty quick, both to our candidates and to being able to fill the positions. In good times, it takes around with background and interviewing folks, et cetera. It takes like three to four months, three months, depending on the position. Um, in the current market, you know, and this isn't, this isn't just a Larkspur thing. This is all over the state and all over our profession and local government. It's non-uncommon for recruitments for positions that were, you know, very attractive to candidates to take seven, eight months, as well as for folks, the reality of the new job market is, um, you know, it used, used to be not always, but that, you know, if someone got a position at a library recreation department, they wouldn't necessarily move around. Um, and now it's just, you know, librarians, people staying in positions for, you know, three to five years, three to six years, et cetera. It's just, just part of the changing thing. So you're just turning over staff um at a time. So also, all of our, all of our um counterparts are also competitive when they need positions open, trying to poach our staff.
Well, uh, thanks for explaining that. I appreciate it.
Are there other council members that have questions? Catherine Way.
Thank you, Shannon, for this uh report. It's very thorough, and I also appreciate the cat of photobombing you behind you occasionally.
She's very, she didn't come in until the auditors, so there were budget questions and she came right back. She was in here in the auditor, so council member Candell's question was of interest to her.
My question is, um, where do we see that this reorganization and the role that individuals will play with our uh park and recreation commission and our library board and commission? Um, how do you see that they will then interact with that community volunteers?
Um, that's ultimately the decision of the director of the department because at the end of the day, um, he's who is my designate for both of those uh bodies. I wouldn't be surprised if in the current, with the two current incumbents, increasingly the park and rec commission receives visits from the assistant director who would be more involved in recreation.
Okay.
Um, but.
There won't be a change in what their expectation is and as it regards to their liaison to those roles.
We will continue to have the director be the primary face of the overall department and as a result and be the first liaison, but we could look to our community development department where the heritage board has generally been staffed by the senior planner and not by the director at at the decision of the director. Yeah, um, we might see something similar here.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Are there other council members with questions on this item? Vice Mayor Paulson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Shannon, thank you for the report. Just a a couple of things. First, I saw Franklin is in the room and I want to thank him especially because I know how much it must be during COVID with short staffing to handle everything. So Franklin, thank you, um, I think from all of us. Uh, a clarification, um, so the librarian two, it sounds like we have one already for youth, one for um, I was it adults or no, there was another category and and then the third that we're filling, is that for access? So actually that that role is is that, did I understand that correctly?
Are you going to talk, Dan? Do you want to speak? Okay, I don't want to get too technical because Franklin is in the audience, but so the, so yeah, so there essentially be an additional librarian position and then access services is again, I'm not going to pretend like I understand exactly what access services is. But uh, it's a specialization that absorbs some of the duties that have been done by the circulation supervisor, as well as some professional librarian duties. So that's the, that's the, that's the spot that's being filled, whereas the the librarian one position is adult services. Um, so right now we have two professional librarians on staff, so you services adult services. And then during the rework.
I brought Franklin over. I thought maybe we'd like to hear from him.
Definitely want to hear from him about that.
The access services is a term used by a lot of the colleges that the, those are the librarians that oversee the circulation departments. Um, with this new uh position, it gives us more flexibility so they can do programming, run a book club. Um, but they can also answer questions. And right now, that was one of the things we had when it was just down to three of us in the library. Um, our previous circulation supervisor who wouldn't answer a lot of questions, um, so it would get passed back between me and Teresa. So this just gives us more flexibility with our employees. It gives, like Dan said, it will give us more flexibility when people are off. Um, and it gets me off the floor. So there's stuff that I've been trying to do that I can't do because I end up, you know, spending my, the entire part of my day, you know, answering questions, answering phone calls, and is some of you have seen running back and forth for curbside. So this, it really just will help us out and it just sort of brings us up to what have a lot of libraries have done to condense um our services. But it's, it's really just a fancy term for circulation. Um, and it, I think Dominican and Podman both have access services librarian, so.
Okay, um, one, one follow-up question, Franklin, since you're here. I I mean, this, you know, is is maybe not something that you can answer, but I'm, I'm wondering, you know, to what extent are three librarians or, you know, third to be librarian, you know, how much they serve the community. So for the the adult and the youth and the access, you know, is there a sense of, you know, what percentage is and, you know, how many, you know, patrons they may be serving?
I don't have a number for the percentage, but I do know that right now they all do everything. So um both Teresa and Jessica um both do teen children's and adult programming. Um, so this is just another person who can add to our plate, and we're hoping once the COVID restrictions are lifted, we'll return to the TAM to do our our monthly presentations, our book clubs. Um, we're also hoping to get more teen programming started, but having more librarians and boards makes that possible. Um, right now, it sometimes Teresa gets stretched to the very, the end because she does a lot of this programming, um, where Jessica is still just picking that up. So having that third librarian will help us add to the the programming element, so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Franklin.
You're welcome.
The council member questions on this item.
I just want to piggyback on what Franklin just reported, that I see Teresa on uh Instagram, on Facebook, doing her book readings, doing her children's uh hour, and I think you've just done a remarkable job during this very challenging time where libraries have tended to be um the quiet place where not much happens sometimes, but boy, you guys stepped up and really created programming um at a time when there was uh everybody was trying to figure out how to do it. So thank you, Franklin, and um I really appreciate seeing her with the the hippo. Is that the hippo?
No, Theodore, our little, it's a little teddy bear monkey.
Teddy bear monkey. Yeah. That was just my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you. We're all very grateful for everything the library accomplishes for the city. It's uh really remarkable. Are there questions uh on this agenda item? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on this agenda item?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any email public comment. And there is no public comment.
I'll bring it back to the council. We have a resolution to consider. This is resolution zero three slash twenty-two. If there is not any further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion. May I please have a second?
I would like to second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Wait, we please have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Haro?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Helmer?
Yes. Uh, the motion passes. We'll look forward to uh building our team up. Uh, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is uh city council appointments, item eight point three. Is there a staff report?
Uh, for the most part, Mr. Mayor, this is the mayor's item. This is the annual exercise of the mayor to determine uh the various uh boards, commissions, committees, uh regional bodies and ad hoc bodies that uh the mayor would like to assign members of the council to attend. In a handful of cases, it's actually staff members that represent the city. Um, as in this year, Mayor uh Hilmer has chosen, uh, I believe to only make one change. It's generally the same uh as last year, so I'm going to turn it to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I have tried to keep things as much as possible the same. If there were any council member requests for changes, I'd like to take those into account. Um, is there any discussion by the council on on this list of appointments this evening? Councilmember Way.
I just had a clarification. I, the management committee, uh, if it's my recollection, that's usually the mayor and the immediate past mayor. Uh, is that correct?
That is correct. I missed that one.
Okay.
Interviewing, so so we should update that to reflect the mayor.
Yeah, so. Right, that's the only note thing that I noticed that was different. It should be council member Haro, Haro and you, Mayor Helmer, not me on that list. So that was the only change I had.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, with that modification, if there are no further adjustments, uh, does this require action on part of the council, Mr. City Manager?
Um, I believe historically you have taken action, but you are not, because I understand it necessarily required to.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, are we required to uh act on this list?
As the city manager said, there's, this is, these are city, these are mayoral appointments and don't require action, but traditionally the council has affirmed the the mayor's actions.
All right. Upholding that tradition, may I please have a motion to affirm the list?
This is Kevin. Kevin, I'm happy to make that motion.
I'm happy to say.
All right, we have a motion. The second, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Haro?
Yes.
Councilmember Way?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Helmer?
Yes. Uh, the motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on the agenda this evening is adjournment. Um, are there any further items to discuss this evening by the council or the city manager? May I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Right, with a motion second to adjourn, without objection, we are adjourned. Uh, thank you very much to the staff for all the work that went into the meeting this evening.
Yeah.
Thanks for the community members who attended, and we'll look forward to the next meeting, which is in two weeks.
Thanks for a good meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
How are you doing today?
Good night, everyone.
Good night.